The next order of business is comments from the public. Do we have anyone that would like to make a comment to the board from the public? If not, okay, moving on. Next order of business is the superintendent's report. Dr. Pennington.
Well, we are winding down the legislative session and I wish I could tell you that I had a lot more to report than I did last month, but I don't. We still have several important pieces of education legislation that are, for lack of a better term, in limbo. They have made it through both chambers of the legislature. They are either in conference committees or have come out of conference committees, but they're waiting for votes on the House floor. We did pass out today, House Bill 2625, is that the right number, guys, the reading bill?
Yes.
Okay. And it did pass. The House represented, I think the vote was eighty-nine to five. It now goes to the governor's desk. That is the bill that will make changes in the third grade retention law, which I'm going to talk about our student performance here in just a minute. We really don't know what the governor's going to do. There's some people who believe that the governor will veto the bill because she reportedly is not in support of parents having a voice in whether or not the children are retained or not. Remember, the idea behind the third grade retention law was a belief by some that schools have practiced social promotion, which basically means we promote students in the next grade regardless of academic performance. And the purpose of the third grade retention law was to end social promotion. The idea was that if there was a big enough threat, and that's really what it is, that we're going to threaten youth retention, that if we threaten youth retention, the prospect of being embarrassed by being retained would be enough to force kids to study harder, do better, learn to read, and we would solve the problems that we have, not only in this state, but really across the country, with students who don't read at the level that we need them to read at to be successful in school. If you saw the reports last week, you know, last Friday, we received our scores. Actually, the State Department of Education released the scores before school districts had them. So before we had a chance to look at the scores and verify that they were correct, before we had a chance to notify parents of how their children did, the scores were released. And, you know, I don't necessarily think that's a good way to do business, but that's what's happened. Statewide, eighty percent of the students who are third graders will not be affected by the law. For our district, the number is eighty-one percent of our students will not be affected. So we did a little bit better, but, you know, not significantly better than the state did. So who are our kids? Well, first of all, there are seventy students, district-wide, who scored unsatisfactory on the OCCT, which is nineteen percent of our student body. The state average was twenty. Of those seventy students, thirty-one are students who are on an IEP, which is forty-four percent of the students that we have that did not score above unsatisfactory. Nine of the students were new to our district this year, so for sure they've been with us. Seven were ELL students. And nine of the students we know will be moved to the fourth grade based upon Good Cause Exemption Number Five, which is the Good Cause exemption, that if you're on an IEP and have already been retained once, you will not be retained again. This is a document that we have delivered to our principals so that they can meet with parents and talk about the Reading Sufficiency Act. Again, we've talked about this all year long. We know, our parents are well aware of the fact that if their students did not demonstrate or if they scored unsatisfactory, they were going to be retained. I will tell you, I think at one of the sites, we had some interesting conversations today with some parents about, they wish they would have gone to the Capitol back on March thirty-first to express their displeasure with this law. Anyway, there are five Good Cause exemptions. The first one is if you're a limited English proficient student, but you've been in the program two years or less. So a student who, English is not their native language, but has been in public education two years or less, would receive a Good Cause exemption. What that means is, is because of a specific criteria, then they're promoted to the fourth grade. Students with disability who are assessed with an alternative achievement standards. And I'll have to let Pat kind of tell us what those are. Pat, do you know what those alternative standards are for those kids?
Well, they have an opportunity to do a portfolio.
Okay.
But they still have to...
Yeah. Number two is students that take the OAP test.
Okay.
The number-two exemption is students that take the OAP test. That means that they show proficiency through a portfolio that is done in some of our classes where students have severe disabilities.
And again, so we're not talking about LD students here. We're talking about severe and profound and some other students which have a more severe disability. Good Cause exemption three is alternative standardized reasoning assessment. So we have purchased the Iowa Test of Basic Skills. We distributed those, we'll distribute those tomorrow, and sometime, we hope this week, we'll be administering the Iowa Test of Basic Skills to the third graders who did not demonstrate or who scored at the unsatisfactory level. The CRT test are Criterion Reference Tests. The Iowa Test of Basic Skills is a norm reference test. Those are different kinds of assessments. The bar that those kids have to reach is they have to score in the forty-fifth percentile on the reading test. Judy, remember from days gone by that the Iowa Test of Basic Skills tests reading, it tests vocabulary, and some other areas that are related to what we consider to be language arts, but all they have to do is take the reading test. You can put together a student portfolio, but again, the portfolio has lots of criteria. One of those criterias is being able to read on grade level. We actually have a student who we're promoting to the fourth grade based upon a portfolio whose mother opted her out of the state, or him or her, out of the state reading test. And then students with disabilities who take the CRT test, and they're on an IEP, but they've been retained already once, either in kindergarten or first, second, or even third grade, one at a time. And then six, if you've been retained, you can qualify for a Good Cause exemption if you've been retained two years and received intensive reading instruction, and you may be promoted onto the fourth grade. So what you'll see here is that, we'll go through this, we'll tell them that either they meet the Good Cause exemptions or they don't. And if they don't, we'll tell them that they're not going to be promoted and they're required to attend summer school, and then we'll give them the assessment again. And then if they score a forty-five percentile or above, then they'll go on to the fourth grade. If not, they will be in the third grade again unless the governor signs the legislation with the emergency clause, which means it would take effect immediately. And in that case, then we would be required to put a committee together that consists of teacher, reading specialist, building level administrator, and then they will look at each child on an individual basis and make a determination whether or not that committee agrees that retention is in the best interest of that child. In that case, if the committee were to recommend retention and the parent disagreed, then they would have an appeal process they could go through, which would be eventually to bring it to the Board of Education. So that's where we are right now. The law that is before the governor only lasts for two years. Basically, is a moratorium on the law for a two-year time period. So that's where we are right now.
So the nineteen percent represents how many students?
Seventy.
Seventy.
Mm-hmm.
And how long does the governor have before she has to make her call?
Well, she has until the last day of the session. There are some things that happen. If, I'm trying to think of what the rules are in Oklahoma. She can veto it, but veto it so late that it cannot make it through. The legislature won't have time to override the veto.
Because it looks like with the vote being how it was in both the House and the Senate, there's a good chance they would override the veto.
You would anticipate that if she were to veto it, they would override the veto.
Because of the high percent in favor of it.
Yeah. You know, I don't know, for something that's only going to last two years, I'm not sure why you would veto it unless, you know, there's a point you're trying to make. And, you know, right now, the legislature and the governor are kind of at each other. There's some legislation that she wants them to do, the Capitol Improvement Project and the Native American Center, and she has not, they have not done that.
And she's mad and vetoing fifteen in one day just for that very reason.
Yep. So, you know, we're that time of year where people are upset with each other and there's still a lot of horse trading going on. But the good thing is, is that because of the efforts of parents and educators across the state of Oklahoma, the Senate and the House listened, and I think they took steps to bring a little common sense into a decision that affects kids. Look, we're not happy that we had seventy students who run satisfactory on the reading test. We're not happy with the number of students we had that were limited knowledge. I mean, our goal would be that every one of our students read at a level that we would consider them to be proficient in reading. The reality is, is we have, not only in this state, in our district, but across the country, we have significant number of students who don't read as well as we'd want them to read. It is frustrating for educators. I've been in education for thirty-seven years, and I can't remember a time where somebody hasn't asked the question, "Why can't these kids read?" And we've been through phonics, we've been through whole language, we've been through multiple, we do more today than we've ever done to help students read. You know, we made a commitment years ago to this district to literacy first and the protocol and the program that they have to improve reading. We believe that our kids read better today than they've ever read, but the standards have changed. We're not using the same cut scores to determine reading proficiency that we used when state testing started in nineteen ninety-two. The standards are higher, and they continue to rise. We will continue to work hard. We probably had about a two-hour meeting this morning where we discussed what we do and how we do it and what can we do better. We're going to meet with principals and we're going to discuss this again. I wish there was a magic bullet. You know, I wish there was a program we could buy. I wish there was something we could do that just by doing that one thing, it would improve reading comprehension for all kids. But it's not out there. We know that one key to reading is to read. And that sounds so simple. You know, we know that children who their parents read to them early are better readers than children who grow up in families where parents do not read to them. We know that children are better readers when they read at home, when they actually take a book home and they read it, and they have an adult that they can read that book too. But unfortunately, we have families where that does not happen on a regular basis. It's not the child's fault, it's just circumstances. Sometimes it's because parents are at work at night when children get home, and so there's nobody to read to or read with. You know, we have, our parents are working hard, they're trying to provide for their families. You know, this is not about blaming people for the situations that some of our kids are in, okay? But we know things that will help. And the issue is trying to get those things, those interventions is what we would call them, to get us to practice them in the schools the best we can, but also to get the support at home or from within the community that we need. That's why some of the tutoring programs that exist in our community are so important because of those children, maybe they don't have anybody at home they can read to, but they can go someplace and they can work with a tutor after school and have an opportunity to practice their reading. We're working hard. We're not where we want to be. We'll continue to do everything we can to get better. So does anybody have any questions for myself or for Terry or for Pat? I have said from the beginning, I do not believe that a decision as important as retention should be based on a test. A test can play a role, it can give information, it can be a part of the discussion, but it should not be the sole thing that determines whether or not a child is retained. There's lots that goes on with retention. You know, we know, you know, we really are in a quandary. We know that retention doesn't do what we want it to do. We know that. I mean, the research is clear that retention does not lead automatically to better educational outcomes. We know that what we're doing right now doesn't get all of our students to a level they need to be at in reading. So, you know, again, we know that retention doesn't work. We know that sometimes passing kids going on to the fourth grade doesn't improve their reading scores. But we do know this, as we look at our data for our kids, as they, longer they're in our system, that by the time they're in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, our reading proficiency numbers go up. So our kids improve as they go on through the system. We know that. I mean, we have evidence that shows that. So anyway, that's where we are right now, and we're anxious to see, again, what the governor does. I want to make sure, I'll make this very clear, not because we want to not hold kids accountable or not hold teachers accountable, but because we believe that retention, based solely on a test, is not in the best interest of kids. That's not the correct educational decision. Okay? That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, W? Next item, the Consent Calendar 5.0. We talked about this in the finance meeting. 5-1 is the agenda with commentary. 5-2, minutes from previous meetings. 5-3, contracts under ten thousand dollars. The vast majority of them were all activity fund requests, which really doesn't cost us anything, it's just that we have to authorize the expenditures from the activity funds. 5.4, travel. There was one out-of-state request, if I remember right, it was for a yearbook. Yearbook company is paying for the sponsor for the high school yearbook, I believe it is, to travel Boston or somewhere. So with that, if there's no questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve 5.1 through four.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. Any questions, comments? Call for the vote, Jen.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.0, same type deal. It's 6-1, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following district financial reports. We talked about them in depth at the finance meeting. Brenda assured me as much as we argue and ask for more money that we're not really going broke at this ten seconds in time, and we will have enough money to pay our bills for this school year at least. Does anyone have any questions about any of the particular items? If not, I'll call for a vote.
How about a motion?
Motion from Dawn to approve 6.1.
A second.
And a second. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jen.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt? Dawn? Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Robin, if I have just a minute, I just want to remind the board that I'm pretty sure that before we meet again, that we're going to have a budget. I mean, they have to be adjourned by May thirty-first, and I know they don't want to go into a special session because it's an election year, they need to be out campaigning, and some of them have primary opponents. It's very, as you see those numbers come out, the key number for us will be how much of the money we get goes into the state aid funding formula, okay? You know, it's, you could see a headline in the paper that says a hundred million dollars goes to Common Education. But if that money goes to the State Department into their activities budget, then that really doesn't do us any good because it doesn't help us pay the bills, okay? You know, I'm pretty sure that you're probably going to see forty million dollars for health insurance. Again, that's a nice thing. I'm glad that we provide health insurance for our employees, but that money doesn't help us pay bills, hire teachers, do any of those kinds of things. So what's really critical is how much money do we get in the funding formula. The last two years, the vast majority of dollars that have gone to Common Education have gone to the State Department, either into health insurance or into State Department activities, which is stuff like Reading Sufficiency money, National Board Certified Teacher, all good things, all things that we believe are important, but they don't help us operate the school district, so.
I agree. Item 6.2, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the application for the participation in the 2014 Summer Food Service Program for Children. It's my understanding, is Jeff still here, that this is pretty much just a formality and paperwork to make the summer food program?
Right. We have to apply each year, and as we have the last three years, we're just doing it for the month of June. And Lincoln's having some construction, so we're going to be at Roosevelt and do breakfast and lunch at Roosevelt and just lunch at West, just for the month of June.
And Jeff, who's eligible to eat at these sites?
Anybody that's ages one to eighteen.
Okay.
And then adults can come, but they have to pay.
Okay. And they don't have to be enrolled in summer school?
Nothing.
Okay.
Is it two meals a day?
We do breakfast and lunch at Roosevelt and just lunch at West.
So yes, Dr. Kincaid, anybody one years of age to eighteen can go to Roosevelt and for the month of June can have breakfast and lunch?
Right.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Dawn to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Dr. Kincaid. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jen.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Stay put, Jeff. 6.3, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve an increase in full-price student lunches for 2014-15 school year. It's my understanding that legislation basically says we have to start escalating up for full-paid students and people up to the mandatory amounts that the federal government tells us.
Well, yeah, 2010, the Healthy Kids Act said that we needed to address that each year. The thing is, is that every year, the federal government increases our reimbursement, so we'll never catch it. So it'll be an every-year thing that I come up here and stand in front of you. They have a formulation for us, and this, keep in mind, this is for the full-priced students. These are the students who aren't free, aren't reduced, that pay full price. And so we try to keep that number down because these typically are the people who pay full price for everything. A lot of families that just barely miss the being reduced and may have four or five kids in the household or paying full price. Now, you know, two dollars and five cents or two dollars and thirty cents, it's not a lot for a huge meal like we offer, but if you have four or five kids in your family, it can add up. And so we try to keep that pricing down, and it's less than one percent of our entire budget. So, I mean, it's not, I mean, less than fifteen percent of our entire budget. So it's not a huge amount of money, but it is something that we increase each year. The minimum amount, based on the tool that we complete, is ten cents. So every year, we'll see a ten cent increase every time, at this time of year. Until we catch up, we won't ever catch up, because the average federal increase is about six cents a year, four to six cents. So we're at two ninety-five on our federal, so we're still pretty far away.
That said, I have a motion to approve 6.3.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Judy, a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jen.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
6.4, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve change to London Rome Educational Field Trip Proposal to Include Eighth Grade Students. Last month, we approved a potential educational trip. I believe all this is doing is now dropping it down to add one more grade level, assuming they meet all the same requirements, same qualifications, et cetera. Does that kind of explain it?
Yep.
Well, why did they drop it down? What was the reason?
I think, Judy, because those eighth graders are going to be in the high school when it's time to take the trip so that they can start the fundraising process.
It's like 2015.
Is that, okay, we got to check, come tell us.
Okay, here we go.
I'm on the magical microphone. No, we decided to go ahead and ask for approval for the eighth graders at the time of the trip. The reason for that is when we initially did some of our recruitment meetings at West, we realized that we were presenting to both seventh and sixth graders, and it occurred to us that that could only help us because not only do some eighth graders move during the course of their high school career and therefore would never have the opportunity to go on the trip during their senior year, so this would give them that opportunity. But this would also allow us to facilitate more discussion about the literature between us and the middle schools and would allow them to have a lot of foundational knowledge about Shakespeare, which we hit very, very hard at the high school at three different grade levels. So this would allow them to come to the high school with a lot of that knowledge that they would not have otherwise received.
I assume the parents are pretty much in support of this.
As far as I understand, yes. We have not yet had any eighth graders approach, or potential eighth graders, approach us about this because they do know that they have the opportunity, their senior year, because we intend to have this happen every four years, but we wanted to have that option available.
And again, I think the only expense to the district would be for substitute teachers, if I remember correctly. Right. Comments or questions?
Well, I'm just, I don't know, I was just thinking, when we moved the ninth grade up to twelfth grade, I thought, you know, everybody was upset, ninth graders being with seniors and all that, and I just wonder how they're going to feel, eighth graders going on a trip with older kids.
Well, I mean, you have to have parental permission.
Well, that's true.
The parents will have to sign off on it, so there's not anybody going to go.
And I would imagine most eighth graders will have a mom or a dad along with them as a chaperone. I don't think many will send them to Europe without one.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Judy, second?
Second.
Call for, motion, any questions, comments? Call for the vote, Jen.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Item 6.5, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve Fad Dilbeck as Activity Fund Custodian for Ponson City High School. As the incoming principal, he will need to be the Activity Fund Custodian. I think that was pretty simple. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion from Dawn to approve.
A second.
Second from Judy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Dr. Pennington or Gary, on 6.6, will we need to vote on each one separately?
Activity Fund Custodians?
No.
Oh, no.
The next item, 6.6.
No, you can lump them together.
Okay, let me explain a little bit on 6.6. A is renewal of the agreement with Burnett Security. This is for the two guards at the high school. If we have questions, we can ask Brett about it. B is the new Lightspeed contract. It's the fourth year of a four-year contract that was signed. Lightspeed is the company that keeps the high school kids from the things on the internet we don't want them to see, the way they go about protecting from that. C is another renewal of a contract with Burnett Security. This, I believe, is for the daily deposits from the various schools to the bank. D is third-party natural gas from Clearwater Enterprises. Basically, Clearwater is the third-party company that procures natural gas, sells it to us, their cost plus a certain percentage, same type contract we've had before with them, correct, Brett? D is the agreement with Lewis and Associates for Architectural Service. It's an annual contract. Rates are already established. His fees are anywhere from six percent to a remodel to eight percent for new construction of big projects that we do. These are the same rates, same contract we've used in the past with him. Any questions on any of those for the people that know a whole lot more about it than I do? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve 6.6 in its entirety.
I believe that we approve 6.6 in its entirety.
Motion from Dr. Kincaid, second?
Second.
Comments, questions? Call for the vote, Jen.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.7, consideration and vote to approve or not approve a proposed executive session for the following purposes, to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, to discuss confidential conversation with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation, to discuss purchase of appraisal of real property, and to discuss negotiations. I assume we need to have one?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
Yes.
Have a motion from Dawn, second?
Aye.
I'm going to ask a second.
Second from Dr. Kincaid. Call for the vote?
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
And hopefully Mary took the... Session. Minutes of the executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk and will remain confidential. 6.10, vote to approve or not approve recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel, including the addendums and amendments. Do I have a motion to approve from Dawn, second?
A second.
Second from Dr. Kincaid. Questions, comments? Call for the vote, Jen.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?